I got her attention.
Hello Eugene.
You know you're gonna sign off on that.
I'm gonna sign it on the phone though. Oh yeah, as the chairman, yes, yeah.
Good evening. Welcome to the March 27th meeting of Aiken City Council. We're gonna call it to order at this time. If you're so inclined, please feel free to rise with us for the invocation, which will be followed by the pledge led by Chief Beranco. Father, we're thankful for this day. We're thankful for this time to come together to tend to the business of the city we love. We ask that your blessings would be upon this meeting, that everything that is said and done would be for the betterment of our city and pleasing to you. We ask for wisdom for this council. Well, Lord, as always, we ask for protection for our men and women in blue, for all of those who give service to our citizens. Lord, as we come into this season of flowers opening and so many events going on, we ask for safety for our citizens and our visitors alike. And we pray that as they visit our city, they would be welcomed with the kindness that Aiken is known for. In your name we ask it, amen.
Amen.
Chief, good evening.
Mayor, council? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We'd like to go over the guidelines for Aiken City Council meetings. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is expected. During the non-agenda items from the public portion of the agenda, speakers will be given three minutes to address council about any issue they are concerned about. The total time of this agenda item is not to exceed thirty minutes. During the public hearing portion for each agenda item, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and I will certainly recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. Speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address the issue. It may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to that speaker. So we appreciate everyone adhering to our guidelines. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Mayor Pro Tim, Councilman Walts, for additions and deletions to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under new business tonight, number five, in ordinance to rezoned property owned by Jean and Jamelle Grant, from residential single-family RSA to general business, GB will be continued to a later date. Other than that, everything stands as presented and I put that in the form of a motion.
All right, thank you, sir. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Councilman Jericho, thank you for that. All in favor of the agenda as presented? With one modification, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. I think that's the first time I've ever called for a voice vote, isn't it? Very good, that's unanimous. Moving down our agenda. We now come to the item two, which is our, I'm sorry. Item one is minutes. Minutes were given to council for their review before our meeting. At this time, I would look for a motion to accept the minutes as presented. All right, thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Broll. All those in favor of the minutes as presented, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous, thank you. We now move down to item number two on our agenda, presentations. Item number one is a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Gail Diggs to read the proclamation into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
Evening.
Whereas South Carolina's 1.1 million children residing in the diverse communities across our state, including thirty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-nine in Aiken County, are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of our great state. And whereas, childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community and can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas, protective factors or conditions that reduce or eliminate risks and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children and communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that build strong children and families. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas, we acknowledge that we must work together as a community in partnership to build awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas, in a fiscal year, in fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, there were five hundred and sixty-five children in Aiken County in substantiated cases of abuse and neglect. Now, therefore, I, Rick Osborn, Mayor, and City Council of the City of Aiken, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention Month throughout Aiken and encourage all South Carolinians to dedicate themselves to protecting the quality of life for all children and families. And it's signed by the entire council.
Very good. Just for the record, why don't we do this, can I have a motion for this proclamation?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Councilman Walts. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Price. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous, thank you. We have Peggy Ford here with us for Children's Place. And we're gonna meet you down there in a second, Peggy, but I tell you what, while you have the floor, I think there's some exciting news going on we've all been watching at Children's Place, so would you mind?
Yes, first can I bring up all of my board? This is our board chairman, Janice Lawson. Please, board and employees, come forward. Don't think they're rushing you. They don't often get to stand in front of people and own the work that we do. And it's really grand to be with you tonight and be able to introduce to you all of these people that work hard all the time to see that Children's Place exists and that we get to stay doing our work. We have actually broken ground, actually have real...
Peggy, I'm gonna ask you to speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you.
We actually have bulldozers on our property moving real dirt. So we're very excited that it's underway. We've been told that we could be seeing a building ready for us to walk in in late December. So we are really excited. It's taken a lot of people. And I'd like to, if you don't mind, I'd like to be able to tell you who's with me.
Please, please do, that'd be great.
Marilyn Harris, she's the Director of Our Family Support Services for Children's Place. Brad Pickenham is behind her, a board member. Sarah Wood, a board member. Janice Nix, board member. Lois L., board member. Jerry, a board member, who's been treasurer and Sarah's been president, so is Janice. And then Angela Fleming. So, and then Janice Lawson, who's the current president.
Welcome, everybody.
Oh, and Lauren Maloney. She's the Director of Community Outreach for us.
Well, I'm gonna ask Ms. Diggs to join me down front. We'd like to give this proclamation to Children's Place.
Thank you. By the way, the greatest thing about kids is play. And so you have pinwheels that we've given you tonight. Please display them, because play is the ultimate healer for children. So, thank you.
So we're gonna present this to you, then I think we might do a one-eighty and let Matthew get a photo of the board and Peggy.
I can get on the back.
Here we go.
This works great.
Eugene, get in there. Mayor takes up a lot of room, go ahead and get...
Thank you.
Peggy, it's your board, thank y'all.
Thank you all. Peggy, thanks for the hard work.
Thank you all very much.
And Rick, and Rick, thank you for the hard work as well.
All right. Our next proclamation is designating April as the month of the military child. And I'd like to read this into the record if I could at this time. Whereas April is Military Child, is Military Child Month in a time when our country pays tribute to our military children. And whereas, from a young age, children of service members sometimes endure long separations from their parents and bear the burdens of service. They spend holidays and milestones apart from those they love the most or celebrate with only a short phone call or virtual chat from a faraway parent. And whereas, military children change schools many times between the start of kindergarten and high school graduation. And with each move, they grapple with the difficult goodbyes and the challenge of making new friends. And whereas, although life in a military family can include exploring new places and exposure to other cultures and customs, it can also bring frustration and loneliness. And whereas, during the month of the military child, we show our appreciation for the commitment and service of military children in shouldering these challenges. And we recognize the stressors on military children brought about by the demand of their parents' military life. And whereas, observing the month of the military child demonstrates our support for military children who make daily sacrifices so their parents can keep our nation safe. And whereas, military-connected children are strong and resilient. And we must match their strength with a commitment to provide the full support of our communities and our government. Now, therefore, I, Rick and Osborn, Mayor, and the City Council of the City of Aiken do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three as the month of the military child and call upon the people of Aiken to honor military children with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And I would say, I know our school system is doing that, we actually have, I think Sandra's here? Yep, Sandra Thomas is here, and our schools do a tremendous job of giving support and showing our support for our children and our military children. So with that, I would look for a motion to pass this proclamation.
There's some move, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Broll, is there a second? Okay, Councilwoman Diggs, we had seconds all over for the record. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And of course, that's unanimous. So Sandra, I know you're with the Aiken County Public School District. If you want to meet me down front, I'd love to present this to you on behalf of the military child.
Mr. Mayor, can we ask the military, the individuals that serve in the military to please stand as well? Have military people in the audience?
We have loyal copper.
Yes.
Definitely.
Yes.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
We know you have programs recognizing throughout schools this month and all through the year. This is just our way of showing support for you and for those children and letting them know that we care. So if you'd accept this on behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we now move down to the non-agenda items from the public. Total time limited to thirty minutes and each speaker limited to three minutes. So if you have an item that you'd like to address with council, this is an opportunity for an open mic. Raise your hand, I'll certainly recognize you. Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Daniel Ben Israel, Real Estate Development Manager for the Drayton Parker Companies and Parker's Kitchens. I've appeared before you on a few other occasions. I'm here tonight, however, to express some concerns that we have regarding our application for a conceptual site plan approval on Whiskey Road. As you know, this is one of three developments that we're pursuing here in the lovely city of Aiken. And we're at a point now where we originally made application for the Whiskey Road site back in December of twenty twenty-two. We appeared before the Planning Commission on January tenth of this year and subsequently held a voluntary community workshop with the members of Stratford Hall on February second. And we were originally scheduled to appear before City Council on February thirteenth. However, after some discussions with staff, we were advised to continue that meeting until such a time as we could complete a traffic impact analysis, which we did, which we've done. We completed the analysis and we submitted it to the city for review.
When was that submitted?
Last week, I believe it was, last week Thursday is when it was submitted. So, and we didn't have any problems doing that again. But we do understand that that isn't a requirement for us to obtain a vote on our conceptual site plan.
That's right.
I think, given the concerns that were expressed from the community, it was, we were advised that it would be a good idea for us to have that completed when we come back before we appear, before council. So we've done that.
I believe even to go further, I think, I said I would like to see that before I'll entertain voting on it, so...
Sure, sure.
Which is certainly, wouldn't you agree in the purview of this council to ask for the traffic study? When traffic is the main issue being discussed?
Sure.
Okay, I just wanna make sure you're on.
Absolutely, absolutely. I understand that. I understand that it's at your discretion, that you would review and approve the conceptual site plan. And we certainly understand that. However, we're concerned...
So you got it in Thursday?
I'm sorry?
You turned it in Thursday?
We turned it in on Thursday.
Which is when the agenda went out for this.
Okay, so, no, we weren't expecting to be on this meeting.
Okay.
We were expecting to be on the meeting for April tenth.
Okay.
However, we were told that staff and the South Carolina Department of Transportation would need time to review that. And what concerns us is, and we don't have a problem with that either, but what concerns us is that we're now being told that that TIA has to be approved before we could obtain a vote from City Council. Again, we understand that it's your discretion to review and make a vote on our applications, but for us, that's not what we understood to be the process. We've gone through this, this is our third time.
Sure.
And we've never been asked to provide a TIA in order to obtain a vote on a conceptual site plan.
Right.
And I understand that there is a concern about traffic in this regard, and we're willing to...
I mean, we could have voted without it. I don't think you'd like the outcome, though.
I understand that. And certainly, we would respectfully ask for a favorable vote on our application. I think our concern now is that we do have a contractual obligation to either close on the property in the near future. And so prior to doing that, we would like some indication as to whether or not council will be inclined to approve our application. And so we just don't want to be, I guess, unreasonably delayed beyond this month or next month. And we'd hope that at your meeting on the twenty-fourth, that we would actually make it on that agenda and obtain your favorable consideration.
Okay, and I gave you some extra time at this because I was interacting and I apologize for that, but it's three. Feel free to call and we'll try to get a schedule.
Sure.
Can you also, Daniel, can you also let them know what sort of contractual agreement that you're timed with in terms of having whoever you're interacting with with getting some information back to whomever you're working with as well?
Sure. Would you like me to share that information now?
No, no.
Okay, got it.
No, not now, no.
We can share that with staff, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to, yes, sir, Mr. Moniak?
Good evening. My name's Don Moniak. And I'd like to talk to you about the Shaw Creek Greenway project. First, regarding the question he just asked. When City Council has not heard anything on the Parker's Kitchen at Stratford Drive and Whiskey Road proposal? There's been no readings, right? So how could City Council have asked for them to do a traffic study? Wasn't that the Planning Commission that asked them to do a traffic study?
No. No, I feel like we did. Yeah, it was on an agenda.
It was on an agenda.
It got continued.
Oh, okay.
And we said we didn't want to see it again until the traffic study.
Okay, I was just checking.
As a point of clarification.
So when that got pulled, there was a decision made, okay. Anyway, back to the Greenway. For implementation of the Shaw Creek Greenway, which you discussed during the work session, it says leverage local resources and public support to implement the plan. Now, this is a project that is not in the city of Aiken. This is a project extends well out into the county. And to compare it to the North Augusta Greenway is very much apples and oranges. North Augusta Greenway is almost all confined within the city of North Augusta, accessible from many neighborhoods in the city of North Augusta. This will not be accessible from any neighborhoods in the city of Aiken unless somebody drives up there or you provide some kind of pathway up to Generations Park so that people aren't riding bicycles or walking along Highway One. And Ms. Diggs asked about public safety. And it's a good question, and I don't think it was answered. Because who is going to respond to an emergency on the other side of I-20? Or out by Shiloh Church Road or by Reynolds Pond Road? Is it gonna be Center Fire Department? Is it gonna be Eureka Fire Department? Or is it gonna be City of Aiken Public Safety? I just can't believe that nobody asked that question.
Well, I'll answer for you. It would be in the fire district that says if there's a fire.
Okay, so you're gonna impose...
We have mutual aid with all those.
Yeah, you have mutual aid, but nonetheless...
You knew that, okay.
This imposes on other fire districts without consulting with those fire districts. This is not a city path. This is gonna be out in the country next to swampland where if somebody gets even the slightest bit lost, it could be rather disastrous. It's not a walk in the park. And I think you need to have a public hearing to involve people out in the county because this also could involve future annexation. And not just discuss this within the city of Aiken, because you should be working with Aiken County on this.
We allow county residents in all our public...
I know that.
As you being up here as a county resident, not a city resident.
During your work session, your work session...
You're not a city resident, but you...
Your work session was not, your work session was not a public hearing. There's a difference, a public hearing...
But we haven't voted on anything either.
You would be soliciting information from the fire districts.
It was a presentation for information, that's three minutes.
Your proposal...
That's three minutes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
My name's Laura Lance. I live on Old Powder House Road in Aiken.
First, I'd like to say I agree that children are our most valuable resource. And I agree that we should promote activities that build strong children. And I agree that we should work together as a community to contribute to and promote the well-being of children. And I agree that play is an important part of all that. And so I would just ask that city council, please, remember all that and take that into consideration in future actions and discussions and decisions regarding access and facilities to parks in Aiken. And I, of course, would particularly point to the North Side Park. You know, because listening to the discussion on the Greenway, I, it, you know, it goes from north to south and it, rather than, you would think it would go maybe from south to north, starting in the city to, you know, to benefit the people who live in Aiken, like, oh, great, here's this Greenway, kind of like North Augusta has. How do we get there? And so it's kind of like the North Side Park just kind of like, you know, was leapfrogged. The north side of town was leapfrogged over to the North Side Park, which hasn't yet been developed as it was promoted along the way over time that it might be. And so we're talking about, you know, however many millions of dollars, six, seven million dollars to build this Greenway. But yet there's not yet been money to, you know, put in basketball courts or pickleball courts or tennis courts out at the North Side Park. So I would just ask, not wanting an answer, but would just ask why it was, just something to think about, I mean. Why the Greenway is going from north to south? And then it's mentioned that there's a south terminus, as if that's it. And there's not been any discussion on, you know, how the people in the city of Aiken, including the North Side residents who never have received the access to the park that they were promised, unless they're in a car. But there's still not a sidewalk leading out there, so. I guess that's pretty much it. I would just like to see the Greenway benefit Aiken rather than focusing just on tourists and bicycle clubs and such, to also benefit the people of Aiken. Because there's a lot to be said for the quality of life for the people who live here, not just bringing people in here to spend money. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Any other comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Mr. Culvert? Good evening.
Good evening, y'all. Lowell Copper, chairman of the Aiken County Veterans Council. Can you throw that slide up for me, please? He's going to throw up a document real quick. As you know, I'm lucky, I get to come up here and be a cheerleader for all our veterans of Aiken County. As the chairman of the council, we have eighteen thousand veterans that call Aiken County home. I think she already left, Sharon already left. I want to brag a little real quick on, it wasn't planned, it just kind of worked out, the whole military child thing. Ms. Diggs came and asked me to speak. I'll piggyback on that. We're one of, we were one of the very first school districts to get that up and going with Lexington, I think was the first one, and then us, so they've led the way, they're doing great things. We're one of only a handful in the state of South Carolina that exists, so I appreciate you guys doing that on the behalf of the kids. And a shout out to her, but I think, like I said, I think she already took off. Just real quick, these are some events that are coming up. On Wednesday of this week, we're hosting at the Vietnam, or out at the Veterans Park, right over by the DMV, the Vietnam War Remembrance Ceremony. It'll be held by the Vietnam Veterans of America Chapter eleven forty-five, starts at 1:00 P.M. We'd love to have you guys come out. It's open to the public, it's free to attend. This year is significant because this year marks the fiftieth anniversary of the end of Vietnam, so it's a pretty big deal. April twenty-fifth, our Veteran Affairs Officer, retired Major Dwight Bradham, all of you are very well who that is, will be holding a Veteran-Spouse Planning Seminar. Essentially, this is kind of like an estate planning for veterans. In the event that a veteran passes away, their spouse has a book that we will build with them of everything that they will need. Just like for anyone, when you pass, there's certain things that you need for your barrel and all that kind of stuff. For us, it's a little, there's some other benefits that are there, so there's other paperwork that's needed, this helps out with that. I would like to share with you guys that there is a Veteran Affairs Officers Association in the state of South Carolina, which all forty-six counties belong to. Last Tuesday morning, our Veteran Affairs Officer, Dwight Bradham, was elected the president of that association. And later that day, he was honored by our senate in the state of South Carolina with our senators, Young and Massey, for his work and what he's done for the county. Twenty-seventh, so that'll be April twenty-seventh and twenty-fifth. May twenty-seventh is the Memorial Day Parade. That's what Ms. Diggs, who's part of the parade committee, asked me to come speak about. It starts at ten a.m. We're one of very few cities in the state of South Carolina that actually has a Memorial Day Parade. We're very proud of it. We even ran it during COVID. We ran a caisson down the street with a horse by itself. Thanks to you all, we were able to accomplish that. So it has not stopped, even during COVID, we were able to do that. We're very proud of it, as I said. It's free to enter. The website, aikencountyveterans.org, you can go on there and submit. There's a little form that'll walk you through, and then just click submit. And then about a week prior, we'll notify you as to where you're at in the spot and how you go about getting to that spot. And then that following, so that starts at ten a.m. And then this year, something a little different on Newberry. As I said, we're one of few cities in the state of South Carolina that does this. We got a lot of people that come in from other cities. We're hoping they come and see our parade and leave with a few less dollars in their pocket. And that's what the eleven to three event will be on Newberry. It will have some bouncy houses, some food trucks and that kind of stuff. So we're hoping people will come downtown. A lot of years in the past, they've come and they've just left. We're hoping that this will keep them for a little bit longer. I realize I'm over my time, I apologize. Thanks for allowing me to come.
Lowell, thanks for all you do.
Yes, sir.
A great chairman for the organization, and we're lucky to have you in the community, ma'am.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Lowell has just been a godsend for Memorial Day Committee. And for years, we've been trying to work on an activity after the parade. And Lowell is one of the reasons why we're able to pull this part together this year. And we're just so thankful for him and all his hard work. And the entire Memorial Day Committee.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Lowell.
Any other comments before we move on? Thank you. All right, moving down to old business. Item number one is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. I'll recognize our city manager at this time, Mr. Beanbo. Good evening.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me in the back? Thank you. We have one appointment for consideration. It's the reappointment of Brendan Doherty to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
All right, very good. We have one appointment before us. Is there a motion?
I so moved.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Broll. Comments from the audience? Comments from council? Hearing none, all those in favor of this appointment, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous, thank you. At this time, we open up the, for an opportunity for council to make nominations to be considered at our next public meeting. Okay, Mr. Jericho?
I was sorry to get the resignation from the Design Review Board by Katie Lipskin earlier. She did a good job, and I appreciate her being on that committee. I have a appointment that I would like to be considered. Faith Hawkes at seven twenty-five Grace Avenue. Ms. Hawkes, been here a couple of years. She is an architect, works for Mosley Architects, has incredible resume. I talked with her earlier. I think she's going to be an outstanding addition to the DRB. So, we've noted Faith Hawkes.
Good job, thank you. Any other nominations to be considered at our next meeting? All right, thank you. Moving down to old business, item number two, this is a second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to redraw city council member districts by title and ordinance amending section fourteen dash one of the Aiken City Code to provide for the purpose of adjusting the boundaries of the six single-member city council election districts to the twenty-twenty census. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jericho. Comments from staff?
Thank you. We do have this ordinance to redraw council member districts related to the decennial census, which took place in twenty-twenty. The multiple public hearings, two public meetings were held, public information sessions as well as online. And we drew the maps to do our best to conform to one-person, one-vote requirements that we must abide by. We do redistricting approximately every ten years and have since the late nineteen eighties and so forth. The plan before you keeps certainly six single-member districts, makes modest adjustments to all the districts to keep them roughly the same amount of population within a certain percentage. And these maps are before, this map and plan is before you for second reading. Should council choose to pass this plan or, once a plan is put into effect, it will go into effect immediately. As noted in the ordinance, any unexpired term of a council member elected in twenty nineteen or twenty-one shall not be affected by the current plan. However, should a vacancy occur prior to completion of the terms, the new maps would supersede the current map that is in effect at this very moment. The, also, we've been in contact, so once a plan is approved by the council, we will work with the County Board of Voter Registration and Elections to send to those voters, only those voters whose districts have changed, a new voter card. Again, I know there's always some confusion. I've had several people reach out to me, this doesn't affect your voting precinct. This is only your election district for city council. Does not affect your state senate, county council, school board, et cetera. Just a single-member city council district. Mr. Holly has advised us on this plan, Jim Holly. Jim is, due to illness, he is well enough to speak on the phone, but he did not need to be here today due to recovering from a bug. So he is available by telephone should we have any questions. But it is before council tonight for second reading, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council?
I have.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Price?
Yes, sir. I feel compelled to comment on two, in two areas. One is, actually, three. Counsel and their input, honest input with this plan. Secondly, Eugene White, who is the Aiken County President of the NACP, who's provided his input, and that has been extremely valuable to all of us. In addition to Jim Holly, who has represented us with counsel and statistics and looking at the census for more than three decades, highly regarded in this state for his input. And with that, we've come up with this plan that I think is a fair plan for all of us, so I'm personally thankful.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Agreed. All right, hearing no other questions or comments? All those in favor on the item fours, please raise your hand. And that passes unanimous, thank you. I do want to recognize.
Tim Detroit.
Tim, I know you worked hard on this plan. Thank you so much for it. And Jim, thank you for your help.
Tim's front row in the green shirt.
That's right, very good.
Thank you.
All right, moving down the agenda, item number three. I'll be recusing myself from this item because it's an agreement with the Municipal Association of South Carolina, which I'm president of this year. So I'm going to turn the gavel over to Mayor Pro Tim, Ed Waltz.
All right, this is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance authorized in the city of Aiken to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Municipal Association of South Carolina relating to South Carolina Local Revenue Services. You want to read it?
Sure.
Thank you. The motion is, or excuse me, the ordinance is titled, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the City of Aiken to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Agreement Relating to South Carolina Local Revenue Services to Participate in One or More Local Revenue Service Programs to Execute and Deliver One or More Participant Program Supplements and Other Matters Related There Too." So I think at this time you'd take a motion.
Does it have a call for a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Second? Didn't want to get whiplash here. Any comments from the audience? Now I'll bring it back to council. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Where'd you get that from?
I just felt like it.
All opposed?
All right, we're done.
All opposed.
Any opposed? I knew that.
Okay.
All these little notes up here.
All right, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim? Move down to new business at this time. Item number one, this is a first reading of an ordinance to annex property on Manetta Street and zone it RS eight residential single-family by title and ordinance to annex property located on Manetta Street and to zone the same residential single-family RS eight. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Jericho. Is there a second? All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Comments from staff?
Thank you. Excuse me. The applicants have requested annexation of a parcel approximately seventy-two thousandths of an acre. Zone it RS eight residential single-family, consistent with surrounding uses and zoning. The property is located in Governor Aiken Park. The planning commission unanimously recommended annexation and zoning RS eight residential single-family, and is before council for first reading this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Beanbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Hearing none, all those in favor of this first one? Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't see. Absolutely, yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I also, I happen to live on Manetta Street. And the property in question that I am wondering about, it was put off, I guess, last month or something, got moved to this evening. Is that the property to the, I don't know, I wish they had addresses up on this thing. I live at four eight seven Manetta Street.
Okay.
So I have no idea where that's at on this map. And in our community, we have five houses that are county.
Yes, sir.
Everybody else is city around us. So are they just looking at the one parcel to annex? Or is it the whole community of five?
Yes, sir, it's just the one parcel.
So that would be, that'd be next to Tommy's house. Okay, that's my question.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And if you have any more, call me. I mean, okay, it's just the one property. I'm sorry, I didn't see. Raise your hand. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, thank you. Comments, questions from council? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Gregory? That's unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to new business, item number two, this is a first reading of an ordinance to annex one seventeen Marvin Drive and zone it RS ten residential single-family by title and ordinance to annex property located at one seventeen Marvin Drive and to zone the same residential single-family RS ten. Is there a motion?
I so moved.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Diggs. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Price. Comments from staff?
Thank you. The applicants have requested annexation of approximately a quarter of an. The applicants have requested annexation of approximately a quarter of an acre, twenty-four hundredths, zone it RS10 residential single family, consistent with surrounding zoning and use. And the Planning Commission, all those present at their March 14th meeting, unanimously recommended annexation and rezoning, or excuse me, zoning to residential single family RS10 and it is before you for first reading this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Beanbow. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Hearing none, all those in favor of this first reading, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous, thank you. Moving down to new business to item number three. This is a first ring of an ordinance to annex 2.17 acres on Oak Grove Road and zone it GB General Business. By title and ordinance to annex property located on Oak Grove Road and to zone the same general business GB, is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Council, Councilman Jared O., is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Brol. Comments from staff?
Thank you. The city is, the applicant is requesting annexation of approximately 2.17 acres, zone general business. It was purchased for the road improvement project known as the Powder House, commonly known as Powder House Connector. The Planning Commission, those present, recommended annexation and zoning general business and it is before you for first reading this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Beanbow. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous, thank you. Item number four, another new business. This is a first ring of an ordinance to approve a concept plan for property on Ginger Lane by title and ordinance approving the concept plan for property located at 123 and 154 Ginger Lane. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, thank you. Councilman Waltz, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Price. Comments from staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting approval of a concept plan for a 160-room, four-story hotel on Ginger Lane, which is located off of Oak Grove Road, near the, near its intersection with Whiskey Road. Property was rezoned planned commercial in 2022. Any development of property in the PC zone requires a concept plan for review by Planning Commission and City Council. The property is proposed to be constructed on, is currently undeveloped and heavily wooded. The hotel would be on approximately three and eight one hundredths of an acre, of the total eight and one hundredths of an acre. Remaining property is broken into two out parcels of one and a half and 2.41 acres respectively, with one and two hundredths acres remaining for stormwater detention or a stormwater facility. The concept plan does show a hotel approximately 41 feet, eight inches tall. Buildings will have a subdued color palette that will blend in with surrounding structures with no bright colors. 166 parking spaces on every side of the building. Hotel requires one space for each room. Required parking would be 160. One full movement driveway would be accessed from Oak Grove across City of Aiken property marked as future Powder House Connector. Motorists will have access to Whiskey Road at a signalized intersection at Oak Grove Road slash East Gate Drive. The width of the driveway is 40 feet, which exceeds the requirement by, of 30 feet. The plan does show 20% open space. Concept plan does require 20% open space and the concept plan does denote that. There will need to be a buffer. Traffic impact study is not required since peak hour trips are not to exceed 100 in the morning and in the afternoon or PM peak hour trips. The Planning Commission reviewed the request and unanimously recommended the approval. Following conditions to read into the record for first reading. First, that the site and landscape plan comply with open space buffer landscaping and tree preservation requirements of the zoning ordinance. Second, the overall color palette of the building be subdued, blend with surrounding structures and have no bright colors. Third, a waiver is granted to increase the maximum driveway width to 40 feet. Fourth, a revised concept plan listing conditions of approval and any changes required by City Council be submitted within 90 days. Fifth, that this applicant signs an agreement stating the conditions of approval within 90 days. Six, that a traffic study be completed. This is before you for first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Beanbow. Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Jacob Ellis, Three Short Court, Aiken, South Carolina. We already have, I counted today, 11 hotels on Whiskey Road. That's from the mall all the way down to Applebee's, 11. That does not include the one proposed for the mall site or the Hampton Inn that is already less than half a mile away from the Hampton Inn that is being proposed for the Powder House Connector Road. That is two Hampton Inns within walking distance of each other. That seems sort of ridiculous to me to have two Hampton Inns owned by the same parent company competing against each other. That doesn't include the 166 parking spaces for the hotel that is already congested on Whiskey Road and that is in addition to whatever will be built for the retail space that has not even been talked about yet. We are supposed to be alleviating the traffic on Whiskey Road, not adding to it? It defeats the purpose of connecting the Powder House? Because what's next, building on Powder House? I don't have much faith that someone won't come before us in the future and prevent a grandy, and present a grandiose idea of beautiful buildings and sites for Powder House and it will be approved. I urge you to vote no on this, thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am. Michael?
On the, what?
I was trying to urge Michael to speak.
On the, let's see, on the citizens can't possibly be informed about everything front. This does impact me and I, and the whole thing, you know, I've followed it over, it's been a lot of years now I've been following it and it's just kind of still confusing to me. But it seems to me, and I think probably to a lot of people, that if you're building a road to alleviate the congestion on Whiskey Road, but then that road is used, is developed, then, then it's, you know, counterproductive. And as someone who lives over, you know, in the Powder House Road area, I'm of course concerned about how all that's going to ultimately play out and what it's going to be like. And so I guess what I would like to know, just as a citizen, maybe you can tell me, where do I go to find what the rules are about what will or can happen on the Powder House Connector? What kind of development can be, what can we expect? Where do I find that information? Are there limitations on that? Is it going to be basically a bypass? Or is it going to be lots of subdivisions and condominiums and et cetera?
Mr. Beanbow, if you want to.
Yes, it will be a limited access roadway similar to Hitchcock Parkway from the standpoint of it will not have, Whiskey Road has a lot of curb cuts that have been added on over the years, which helps create congestion. This will have fewer, it'll be a parkway design. On the website, because the plans hadn't been finally, final approved, we don't have plans on the website yet, but it is going to be limited access along the Powder House Connector from Whiskey Road to where it will tie in at East Pine Log Road, meaning that there will be minimal access points onto the roadway between Whiskey and Pine Log East.
But if it's limited access, but nonetheless, at all of those limited access points, you have like a, you know, 600-unit condominium complex and here's another hotel and whatever, then, then it just equals a lot of traffic in between Powder House and Whiskey. It's, it's only add, it's created a new problem, it could potentially creates a new problem on Powder House while exacerbating the problems on Whiskey. Are there any limitations on like what, I guess the density of housing or, or just how much?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, I think, about 400 acres back there right now that are undeveloped. So that is something as the roadway, certainly the roadway will need to be constructed, I guess, before a large majority of the property can be considered ready for development. And I think because it is limited access, it will be less attractive for certain types of development. But there will be some form or fashion of development through there. But it, in the long run, will take traffic off of Whiskey Road by as much as 25% according to the traffic engineers and the traffic studies that have been commissioned for this project in the past.
Is there a place online that I can go to read about whatever, whatever can be known to this point about all this? I imagine a lot of people would like to see that place online.
Sure.
More informed about it.
We can, if it's not online, we can certainly get it online very quickly and you've got the, you know how to contact me, I can certainly let you know. But we'll, if it's not online, we can get it available. If it's on there, we can send a link to you. But I guess off the top of my head.
Another quick question, I wasn't able to figure this out. Where, where, when, when the traffic sluices from, you know, Whiskey down Powder House Connector onto Powder House Road and then it continues onward to Pine Log, where does it go from there? It's like this four lane and then it just, where does it go?
Laura, these are great questions. We need to get back, we need to get back on track immediately. I mean, this is talking about the parcel that's before us. And I think Stuart and I both would sit down with you anytime to discuss.
People will have an opportunity to be a part of the process.
And we're, they absolutely will. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am, hey. Good evening.
Lee Thornton, Hi, was you running? Aiken County.
It's Lee.
I, I guess this is not directly related to the parcel. However, it's the Powder House Road with the, the hotel that you're approving that corner for.
Yes.
And my question is, how many lanes are you expecting Powder House Road to be? Or do you have an expectation?
Yeah, we do.
Sure. At this time, the Powder House roadway will be, it'll have a landscaped median with periodic curb cuts. It will have either one to two lanes in either direction between Whiskey Road and where it ties into Powder House. Again, depending on what section of the roadway will determine how many lanes of traffic in either direction there will be.
And have they proposed how many square feet the hotel will be?
This current hotel.
I'm sure it's in the application.
It's listed as 160 rooms, but in terms of square footage, if I saw it, I don't have a recollection of that.
And, and lastly, what are the setbacks for that zoning? Do you?
Maria, do you have that?
I'm sorry about that. So planned commercial, I believe minimum is 10 foot. Minimum perimeter boundary is 10 foot.
Minimum. That seems a little.
Yeah.
Close. Because I would like, personally, I would like anything that goes on Whiskey and/or Powder House to be able to plant trees. I think the nicest parcel is the Red Lobster because they have trees out in front. And now there's a lot of development that's so close to Whiskey. It's, it's just causing a lot more congestion and.
Yeah, that, and that was obviously because Whiskey developed, they were there before Whiskey developed like it did and it wasn't prepared. And I think that's why the limited access is so important on the Powder House. It's not Powder House, you know, it's Powder House Connector, which is different. But it's so important that we have the limited access to it because you might see a frontage road, but you won't see umpteen curb cuts along the way. It also has a pedestrian and bike path along it also. So again, you would want to keep the curb cuts to a minimum on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Any other comments? Thank you. Any comments from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Brol.
To her point, one of the, number one on there is that it has to comply with the open space buffer landscaping and tree preservation requirements of the zoning ordinance. And to your point, when you said it's going to be controlled access, this particular piece of property is for eight acres. This is only going to be three acres that are developed, but the curb cut is going to be access to those others. So it's not like Mr. Beanbow said, there's not going to be a curb cut for every business that comes in there. It's going to be controlled access or frontage road, as you said. That makes a difference in how things flow.
All right, any other comments from council?
Well, just sort of speak to, I guess the question would be if it's going to be limited access, why is this one getting access? It basically comes down to this piece of property, hotel aside from whatever went on this property, it comes down Oak Grove Road and they have access that way through Ginger Lane, which we use that address in the whole thing. So what it basically comes down to is you can't take away their access to a road. So the new road would have to still give this particular property access. I think there's another piece back behind it that will have to have access too. But as I understand it, we'll have Centennial Drive come down into a traffic circle. There'll be a traffic circle in there and it'll go north and south. It'll go past that, so they'll have two openings there. And then, far as I'm concerned, it doesn't have any access all the way to Powder House Road. So there in a nutshell is how I, I understand it. I don't think that we've approved it all the way to Powder House Road. We've sort of set up and approved the traffic circle and haven't gone beyond that. But that is the range of the contract as, or the, the plan, as I understand it, for the parkway.
All right, thank you, Councilman Jared O. All right, with that, all those in favor?
I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question, and I may have missed it on the concept plan and so forth and so on. But what is the percentage, like if I, I look at the city of Aiken, how many hotel rooms do we have total? I'd like to see that for the second reading. How many hotel rooms we have total versus ideally what the city of Aiken should have based on the eventing that we have going on with city events, athletic events, historical events, horse events? I think it's important to show the community that there's a need for this type of establishment.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions? Very good, all those in favor of this on first reading, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous, thank you. Item five was continued at the request of the applicant. So move down to item number six, which is a first ring of an ordinance to rezone 2.82 acres on York Street and Columbia Avenue from Light Industrial LI to General Business GB. An ordinance to rezone property owned by Rural Health Services Incorporated from Light Industrial LI to General Business GB. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself, this is my employer.
Okay, very good. And I'll second it. All right, Ms. Diggs is recusing herself. The motion was made by Ms. Price, second by Councilman Jared O., and comments from staff?
Thank you. The applicant has requested zoning of about 2.82 acres located at York and Columbia and rezoned from Light Industrial to General Business. This is adjacent to parcel zone general business to both the northern and southern sides of the property. And that the comprehensive plan indicates that the property and others. And that, uh, the comprehensive plan indicates that the property and others west of the railroad track is commercial, then it just, so therefore, a general business zoning is consistent with, uh, consistent and future uses of the property. The parcel is currently undeveloped, it is adjacent to other undeveloped and vacant properties and to commercial uses across York. Parcel zone GB are to the north, south, and west of this property and is in an opportunity zone, as designated by the federal government. City Water and Sanitary Service, sanitary sewer services are available. The planning commission reviewed this. All those, uh, voted, all commissioners voted unanimously to rezone from Light Industrial to General Business and is before council for first reading this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Beedenbo. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions from council? Here now, and all those in favor of this reading, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous with the recusal by Councilwoman Diggs. Someone could go. Okay, thank you. And while, um, while he's going, Ed is going, Ms. Waltz is going to get her, um, item number seven is a first reading on an item that both Councilman Waltz and myself had to recuse ourselves on, so I'm going to turn the gavel over at this time to Councilwoman Price.
Item seven.
I've got it out if you need it.
Item seven, this is the first reading of an ordinance to dissolve the Aiken Municipal Development Corporation and delete chapter eleven from the Aiken City Code. And we'll hear from our city manager.
Thank you. The ordinance is officially titled, "An Ordinance Approving the Dissolution of the Aiken Municipal Development Commission and the Amendment of the Aiken City Code to Delete Chapter Eleven." Um, the council did create this board in August twenty nineteen. This ordinance, uh, after, uh, meeting two weeks ago with the, um, council, uh, excuse me, the AMDC, was felt to just take this straight to council for dissolution. Uh, this ordinance would dissolve this board, uh, this AMDC no later than June first, twenty twenty-three, and transfer its assets to the City of Aiken. A list of assets which consists of parcels of real estate, uh, and a bank account that has, as of, uh, March twenty-second, a hundred nine thousand, hundred ninety-four dollars, fifty-three cents would be, uh, become property of the city. And this is before council for first reading, um, this evening. Madam Councilman, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Just want to make a correction, though, in the document, it will be signed by, uh, City Council member Ed Gerardo?
Yes, uh, well, we can change the signatory for the ordinance to Ed, uh, Councilman Ed Gerar, Gerado.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Eddie G., right.
Eddie G.
Moved by Councilwoman Andrea Gregory. Do we have a second?
Second, ma'am.
Seconded by Kate Brol, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign, let's, let's raise our hand.
Right.
I'm sorry, public comment, forgive me. Public comment from the public. And no public comment? I'm sorry. Yes, Linda. Sorry, thank you.
Linda Johnson, five fifteen Parkside Drive. So, having, um, Municipal Development Commission didn't really work out for the city, and that's fine. Um, but the South Carolina rules for municipal development commissions actually have a couple of good points, and one of them is that the commission would normally have to do a redevelopment plan for properties and put it out for public review. So that's not a bad thing. Um, now that we don't have an AMDC, that requirement goes away, and the, the city council owns those properties. But I think the, the public still cares a great deal about these properties and what happens to them and about downtown development. So, what I'd like to ask is, does the city now have any plans maybe to put together some development plan of their own for the properties? And I'm really thinking of the Pascalis block, because you have a lot going on there. You've got the hotel and the Johnson and Beckman and, um, uh, Warnakey Buildings and Newberry Hall, and you still have the old municipal building. You know, there's a lot there, and you have a lot of potential activities going on. So, it would be nice to pull it all together into a single planning document. Now, from a historic preservation standpoint, I care a lot about that. I think you could pull all those pieces together and promote historic preservation on that block. But I think it also could create a synergy, if you talk about the properties altogether and what all's going on, a synergy that would be very attractive to potential businesses and developers if they understood where you were heading in that block. So, I don't know if you have a, um, an intention of making some kind of plan, but I'd really like to encourage you to look at doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Great good for thought. Maria?
Yes, thank you. My name's Don Moniak. First of all, I want to start by saying the, the Aiken Municipal Development Commission has some unfinished business that was not completed at the last council commission meeting, and that's the September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two meeting minutes, which are part of the court record in the Blake et al. versus City of Aiken et al. lawsuit remains unapproved and inaccurate. And that was never, those minutes were never approved, they're never, um, finalized. And also, the meeting minutes for the March thirteenth meeting are also not complete and approved. So, that's probably a minor point, but just to point it out, that you do have some unfinished business. But more important, while dissolving the AMDC is the right thing to do, it is not the right thing to do at this point in time due to continued conflict of interest issues that, if corrected, would result in a lack of a quorum. And I'll explain. At March thirteenth council as AMDC meeting, as I'll call it, the AMDC meeting, there was no vote on the motion to transfer properties and assets of the AMDC to the City of Aiken due to unresolved conflict of interest issues. The option of dissolving the AMDC as an alternative means to transfer assets and properties was presented and accepted. This means the intent of this ordinance today that you're voting on is to dissolve the AMDC is to transfer the properties and the assets. At the council meeting, following that AMDC meeting, Ms. Diggs and Ms. Price, who are on the board of the Aiken Corporation, properly recused themselves from the vote on the Aiken Corporation contract, vote, Aiken Corporation contract with the City of Aiken, vote. That contract provides a path forward for the Aiken Corporation to negotiate a lease with the Savannah River National Laboratory for the proposed forty-five thousand square foot facility that'll be owned by the City of Aiken but leased to the Aiken Corporation in all likelihood. The Aiken Corporation currently rents the Amentum Building for twenty thousand dollars a month, that's twenty thousand square feet. So let's say the Savannah River National Laboratory building rents for forty-five thousand a month, Aiken Corporation is standing to gain five hundred thousand dollars, half a million dollars a year in rental income without making a single investment, or five million dollars over a ten million, ten-year period that constitutes the Patel Savannah River Alliance contract with the Department of Energy to operate the Savannah River National Laboratory. So by voting today to dissolve, you're voting to pursue the stated probability of the Aiken Corporation to control these properties. And you have recused yourself from Aiken Corporation-related business in the past. This is Aiken Corporation-related business, potentially, also because the City of Aiken has that contract with Aiken Corporation, even without the possibility of them taking control of a lease. You're still going to have that con, predevelopment contract that's signed. So the only path forward, really, is to render the Aiken Corporation contract null and void, and then you wouldn't have that conflict, and then you can vote to dissolve the AMDC and start all over again. And I'll make that point, but if you're moving forward now, you have the same conflict of interest that you had on March thirteenth, and that's the presence of two council persons who are also board members on the Aiken Corporation, which stands to benefit to the tune of millions of dollars from this transfer of properties. So I would suggest you just discontinue or vote against this motion. Come back, cancel that contract, follow up on what Ms. Johnson said, and have a true public hearing about the properties that are at stake here, and move forward from there. Have a, a request for proposals for all of the properties, not just the Hotel Aiken. Thank you.
Thank you. Um... He said...
May I address what you said? Uh, yes, Mr. Moniak, there is consideration, um, being proposed that we, we will not have any active city council members voting in an Aiken Corporation meeting, period. We can, we can sit in the meeting, this is you come and sit and listen, but there will not be an active vote taken from any council members in the future that is in a Aiken Corporation meeting.
Yes. Okay, that's in the future, this is the present. And the present is on February eighth, you're at the Aiken Corporation meeting where it was voted to...
This is the topic at hand?
Voted in favor of entering into an agreement with the City of Aiken.
We're not talking about the Aiken Corporation.
On these properties.
The question is, what is being proposed now in terms of a city council member being a voting member of the Aiken Corporation?
At this moment or by Aiken Corporation?
By, it would come from the Aiken Corporation, is that correct?
Yes, there would be, I guess, resignations, uh, and I know the, uh, Aiken Corporation is looking to rewrite their bylaws to eliminate those positions.
So, we are currently discussing the dissolution of the Aiken Municipal Development Commission. That is the topic at hand. As you mentioned, Mr. Moniak, potentially, 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 we can go in ten different paths. Um, so, the subject at hand right now is the dissolution of the Municipal Development Commission.
Well, that, that's your choice. I was just pointing out that there are remaining conflicts of interest. What you're talking about, the Aiken Corporation, is in the future, that has to be voted upon, it hasn't happened yet.
We're not talking about the Aiken Corporation right now.
Yes, but that, but you were talking about that. I made my case, I'll sit down, but I believe that if you move forward on this, you're in conflict of interest. Just, you, you voted to recuse, I mean, you, you recused on March thirteenth from a vote regarding...
The Aiken Corporation.
Aiken Corporation contract with the City of Aiken to pre, on a predevelopment contract for the properties that you are now voting on now. And you voted on February eighth, when you're on the Aiken Corporation, so the same, the same recusal is necessary today to vote on this, as long as that contract is in place, is what I'm arguing. Thank you.
Two separate entities.
If council would like my advice, we can go into executive session. If there's a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We'll come back.
All in favor of, this, we have a motion and a second?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor, let it be known by raising your hand. Any poses? We'll go into executive session. I do want to hear Mr. Lewis, I think he wanted to make a comment.
Hi, uh, Louis, 638 Magnolia. Uh, I think, you know, my, my sense of what the community wants is for the AMDC to be abolished, so I think we have a common ground. I'm not, I'm kind of, you know, very much in Linda's camp, that be careful what you ask for. So I think it's the responsibility of council to, to provide an alternative which is equally protective. And you've got yourself a pickle, because if you do recuse yourself from the Aiken Corp., you're turning over city assets to something which has no representation from council on, so that, you know, private individuals are making decisions about city assets. So this needs some careful thought. Uh, you know, we, we want to work with you and support you and anything you do to get the project going, but, um, you know, the Aiken Corporation is a public body under the South Carolina definition, and it's deficient in not having published its minutes, uh, in years. It's not very transparent about what it does, it's zero transparent about its funding, and, uh, I think if you're going to move forward... And I think if you're going to move forward with a large project with Aiken Corporation, I think it's a very good group that is very efficient at what it does. I think they should come into compliance with disclosure because they're using public funds and they should come into compliance with public hearing rules, which hasn't been that important in the past because there's not been stuff like this. But, you know, i- i- if you are going to put, you know, millions of dollars of city assets in the charge of people who aren't responsible to the electorate and in fact aren't really responsible to anybody because they're sort of a bizarrely authorized 501(c)(3) entity, you need to have some protections.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Good evening, Kelly Cornelius.
I came down here tonight with champagne chilling until what Mr. Moniak said. And so I can't condone conflicts after fighting you over conflicts the entire time of Pascalis. So as much as I would love to see the AMDC abolished immediately after listening to what Mr. Moniak said, from what I get of this, had two people not been associated with the Aiken Corp., you could have done this any day except for this one. Because now, at the last city council meeting, you voted into a contract with the Aiken Corporation. I think I'm understanding that. Had you not voted into that contract, then you could have abolished the AMDC. Some of us have been asking since October. And I think, I think it was even a part of a petition that I signed as well as, I think, three other, 3,000 other people or roundabout numbers from what I hear. So, so a lot of us have been pushing to get this abolished for a very, very long time. So it's discouraging that it sounds like it may take longer. However, you have to go by proper procedure. And I, I trust what Mr. Moniak has, has brought forth here tonight. And I ask you to cancel that contract because I would like this AMDC to be abolished with no conflicts and I would like moving forward that those properties have public input and they have proper public hearings. And signing a, an agreement with the Aiken Corporation when no one really knows what that is about, no public hearings. You know, we went to a meeting that you had your architects at and they said, we're just at the beginning. We're just taking a feasibility study. And then the next thing I know, I'm here watching you sign or vote into a contract with the Aiken Corporation. Was there any other bids for that contract? Was there any public input on that other than that last vote? So maybe it's a good thing that this is happening and maybe you can start with a clean slate without the conflicts hanging over you. So I hope that you will take a step back and, and look at this and cancel that contract and then cleanly dissolve the AMDC.
Thank you for your comments. Let me respond by saying that, thank you. No action has been taken in terms of the property, commitment to the property, or what we will do with the property. Responding to our recusing ourselves, Councilwoman Dixon and myself, in recusing ourselves, we acknowledged that we would resign from the AMDC. Having said that, we, I'm sorry, the, the Aiken Corporation. In, in saying that, we recognize that it is official when it's in writing. This is only the first reading of this ordinance. There is a second reading and public hearing at the next meeting to get a final vote. Having said that, it, it is not final until the second reading in that hearing with city We are moving forward with this first reading and schedule it for the second and final reading at the next meeting. And are there other comments from the audience, the sitting, yes, ma'am?
Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Valerie Robel. And I too was so excited to come tonight because we're finally going to get rid of the AMDC and disappointed, again, that we're so conflicted that we can't take care of it. And, you know, we've tried and tried again, as Ms. Cornelius mentioned, as Mr. Moniak has mentioned, we've been trying since last October at a minimum to get this dissolved. And you could have done it last month or last October, November, or December, et cetera. And it's still not done. And now we can't do it. Or if we do do it, I agree, there's conflicts and there's going to be, it's, it's not going to be smooth sailing. So that's unfortunate. So I, I vote also, or I ask you to please vote, to cancel the contract with the Aiken Corporation. I think we need to start over.
That's not on our agenda for this evening.
Okay, all right, just.
For the entire public.
Yep. And I guess I'm disappointed that I missed that last meeting when you decided to give them $250,000. And I, I have the question too. Is anybody else, any other bids or anything or just, we just chose Aiken Corporation because that's who we like?
It was not required to be bid. They're doing work for us and we will reimburse them for up to $250,000.
Well, I hope you get a lot of work done for $250,000 for what they're doing because that's an awful lot of money that the taxpayers are paying.
Thank you. Any, any further comment? Let me just add to my comments personally. We committed to transparency to what we're doing. And I'm of the belief that we're being transparent. And, Mr. Lewis, I want to thank you for your, your comments in terms of working together. That's what it's going to take for us to get where we need to go and be honest about sharing where we're going. So that's where we're moving forward. We, I want to call for the questions for voting. All in favor of the motion that has been made? Let us raise our hands. Any opposition? The majority has it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price.
You're welcome.
Moving down our agenda, petitions and requests. Number one is approval of a resolution authorizing the City of Aiken to enter into a Savannah River Settlement Appropriations Sub- Subrecipient Agreement with Aiken County. By title of resolution authorizing the City of Aiken to enter into a Savannah River Settlement Appropriations Subrecipient Agreement with Aiken County, South Carolina. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Broll. Comments from staff?
Thank you. The General Assembly appropriated $26.2 million to the City of Aiken from proceeds received from a lawsuit filed by the state of South Carolina against the federal government. In order to receive and use these settlement funds, a subrecipient agreement must be entered into with Aiken County, which currently has funds on deposit for us in our, in an interest-bearing account in the local government investment pool of the state of South Carolina. This agreement will require the city to prepare any necessary reports and provide any backup documentation as required and follow all state, federal, and local guidelines and auditing requirements. And for counsel consideration is approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Beanbaum. Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Yes, Bill McGee, 217 Fairfield Street, Northeast. Has the, has the council come up with a plan as to what they're going to do with the funds coming from the plutonium settlement? You're talking about the $26 million that were designated for downtown development in the North Side? Are you or not?
It was actually 25 million. 1.2 million is designated for Beverly D. Clyburn Generations Park.
Okay. Question is the balance. What, what are we doing with the balance of that money?
Counsel will need to make a budget adjustment to determine expenditure of funds for downtown and North Side. We did have an item before counsel recently that had several items, including, I believe, the Fairfield Street Bridge rehabilitation and reconstruction, a portion of funds to pay general obligation debt related to purchase of property and drawing a blank, sewer, a sewer project within our sewer and sewer district, sewer service area. However, that has not been put into motion because we wanted to, we understood this subrecipient agreement was coming. So that is the, this needs to be passed and then the other items can be addressed.
I know at New Horizons, we'd also discussed sidewalks.
Yes, sidewalks, streetscaping and improvements in the North Side. Again, the funds, there is, I think, if you did, if, assuming those other monies are allocated in the way that were recommended, that would leave $8,900,000 approximately for other uses. So again, I guess to answer your question, none of the 25 million has technically been appropriated yet since counsel hasn't acted on appropriate expenditure of the funds.
Yes, but you've already budgeted for approximately.
No, sir, we have not. We have not passed a budget amendment to budget for it.
Okay, when do you expect to do that so we'll know what's remaining and what can be allocated to the North Side?
I mean, we could start it as early as our next council meeting. But, but again, that would ultimately be counsel's call.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McGee. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Don Moniak. I sent some, this, this agenda item was on the, this was on the agenda two weeks ago and it was removed. And prior to that, I sent some questions. I'm just going to read them again.
Mr. Moniak?
I emailed those.
Mr. Moniak, this is for comments.
Okay, well, these are going to be comments.
No, they're, you just said they're going to be questions.
But you don't have to answer. I'm just going to read, I'm going to read them.
I don't have to listen to them.
Okay, let me put it this way. I'm going to comment on what Mr. McGee just said is that the Joint Bond Review Commission approved a funding request that was for the general obligation bond. I don't think it had Fairfield Street Bridge on it. I'll check.
It did not have the Fairfield Street Bridge on there. You are absolutely correct.
$62 million, of which 25 million is the request, but there was $62 million listed in there. That was for the general obligation bond, 9.6 million, 9.5 million for the properties, $100,000 to pay off the issuance of the bond, and then 3 million, and that was it. So you had a first reading that approved that total plus the sewer gravity lift out on north of town and Fairfield Street Bridge, which left 8.9 million. And that was at a first reading that was approved on, I think, February 27th, am I correct? And then it was put on the agenda for March 13th and then removed. She already voted on that. So the, what happens if you decide not to vote on that? You have to go back to the Joint Bond Review Committee, which has already approved that funding? And then secondly, this, this agreement with Aiken County states that under representation warranties and covenants requires city council to agree there's no action suit proceeding inquiry or investigation at law before any court, public body, or board. So how can this resolution be heard while the City of Aiken remains as defendants in a lawsuit that pertains to this property that's going to be funded with plutonium funds?
That's not correct, sir. That's not in there. I'm going to read sections A and B, representations, warranties, and covenants. It's found on page 189 of the agenda. It says, A, each party to this agreement represents and warrants that it has full legal right, power, and authority to enter into this agreement and to perform and consummate all other transactions contemplated therein. And B, subrecipient is a municipality organized and operating under the Constitution and laws of the state of South Carolina and has the power to enter into contracts and to consummate and carry out the purposes and intents of this agreement.
So the, this subrecipient agreement has been changed a little bit since the one that was set aside on the 13th?
This is what is in the, the packet for today for counsel's consideration.
Today, okay, so it has been.
May I finish, please?
Yes, go ahead.
The county attorney changed the language.
Okay, thank you. That explains that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am. Looking for comments.
Well, I'm going to see if I can rephrase it into a statement maybe instead of a question. My, my concern goes to the, and I, see, I don't know from what's just been said, the 1.2 million dollars set aside for North Side Park, and I read up on that. And it looked like it was going to be, going to be used for an additional entrance to the park. I'd initially thought it was for a turning lane, a special turning lane into North Side Park, but it's actually going to be a separate entrance? I stated that as a question, but can I ask that?
No, we, we can explain that.
It is going to improve the existing entrance, a portion of the 1.2 million.
So it's, it's specifically going toward roadwork entrance?
It'd be like an excel and decel lane.
That is correct.
Okay.
Acceleration lane so you can turn, turn in.
And is it the same, is it the existing entrance or is there another entrance going to be added to the park?
I would imagine at some point an additional entrance will be put in, but at the moment, the McHenry-Holland entrance with US1 will be, is where the improvements will be.
The, the 1.2 million is not for any additional future entrance, correct?
That is correct. The, the 1.2 million that was designated in the funding.
Okay. We, we've also talked about using a portion of that money for the amphitheater.
That is correct. There will be a balance left for that.
Well, yeah, I would love to see money go to basketball courts and pickleball courts and tennis courts, actual recreational facilities to, to go along with the green space. Yeah, that would be great.
Thank, thank you, Laura. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening, Kelly Cornelius. I have a concern with one of your line items on your application to the county. I sent you an email regarding this concern, Mr. Beanbaum, on the 20th and haven't heard back.
That is correct. I have not responded.
My question is with repaying the bond issuance for the Pascalis properties. It's a line item that's listed for $100,000. I had FOIA'd a payment to Pope Flynn that I saw in your financial section. That came back as the payment for their work on the Pascalis Properties bond, this, this $9.6 million bond that you also are seeking to pay off. And that came back, I believe, $32,500, even though the bill was 35.7. There was a little bit of a discrepancy. But anyway, there is roughly $65,000 left that, that I would question what the details are on that bond issuance. And my second concern regarding that is I had FOIA'd early on in the Pascalis process payments from Pope Flynn.
payments from Pope Flynn back in May of 2022. That was not a part of that FOIA return, and it should have been. And I did not get it until seven months later when I saw it as a line item, and I cross-referenced the two. So, I have a concern with your FOIA office, which I mentioned in that email. And I have a concern with what are the details regarding that bond issuance for the other $65,000? Because that's a small portion when you look at how much money this is. But if there's $65,000 unaccounted for in a $100,000 line item, what could possibly go wrong under that next line item for 50.4 million? Those are my concerns regarding specifics and details as you seek this money. I think that should be available to citizens to see.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you. Any comments, questions from counsel? Hearing none. All those in favor of this resolution, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. All right, we move down to section number seven. This is a non-agenda items from the public. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, not to exceed 30 minutes, and we open it up at this time. If you wish to speak, raise your hand, and I'll certainly recognize you. All right. Thank you very much. Anything under information, Mr. Beanbo? Issues and updates?
I do not have anything at this time.
Very good. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, Councilman Jericho, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Price. All those in favor, please stand up. We're adjourned.